Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Public Meeting Act pursuant to Public Laws 1975, Chapter 231. This agenda is completely the extent known of the sense of the Trenton Times, Trentonian newspapers, posted on the first floor of Golden Board in City Hall, and filed with the City Clerk's office, posted in the City of Trenton website. Formal action will be taken. Roll call. Councilwoman Edwards.
President.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Present.
Councilwoman Figueroa, okay. Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Harrison.
Present.
Councilwoman Williams.
Present.
Council President Frisbee.
Present.
Myself, Brandon Garcia, Mr. Clerk, present. Mr. Wesley Bridges.
Present.
And Mr. Ike Kalosian. Sounds good. On your call, Madam President.
Let's begin with the invocation, please.
Certainly. Almighty God, who holds the faith of man and nation, we most humbly beseech thee to bless this our city, these deliberations, and these thy servants, that they may act with wisdom and understanding for the good of our community, and thy greater glory. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, Madam President, I understand we have some presentations today and recognitions today.
Yes.
And the beginning, well, you take it away. Go ahead.
We're gonna ask Councilwoman Gonzalez, she has a presentation, and just so that everyone knows, we're going to do all of our presentations, first we're going to announce them, and then we will meet those who are being honored in my left corner by that beautiful curtain, so that everyone knows exactly where we're going to take pictures. Thank you. Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes, thank you everyone for being present. Today, we are going to honor the Trenton VFW, whereas the Trenton VFW reference at four boards post 12165, under the able leadership of Commander Ryan Green embodies the spirit of a hometown hero who served his nation with honor and distinction. Ryan's journey includes a dedicated service in the United States Marine when he bravely embarked on combat tour during Desert Storm, excuse me. He is just one of many hometown heroes who are charter members of the remarkable organization. And whereas since its establishment, the Trenton VFW Post 12165 has been a shining beacon in the community and surrounding areas, and its unwavering commitment to veterans, their families, and the Trenton community has not gone unnoticed. The post has earned prestigious All-American and All-State honors, a testament to their consistent dedication and excellence in meeting all of the VFW benchmarks as a community organization. And whereas the Trenton VFW Post 12165 has done remarkable work in assisting veterans, ensuring they receive a full range of benefits, including disability, education, medical, and housing support. And as an all-volunteer organization, their dedication knows no bounds, and they serve as a vital outlet for veterans in need. Their mission doesn't stop there. The Trenton VFW Post 12165 is committed to promoting veteran awareness within this community, ensuring that the sacrifices and contributions of our veterans are acknowledged and respected. With Commander Ryan Green at the helm, this post continues to stand as a shining example of hometown heroism, unity, and unwavering support for those who have served and sacrificed for our nation. So there be resolved that the Trenton City Council wishes to recognize and honor the Trenton VFW 12165. I want to personally say thank you to the VFW for all of their hard work that they do in the City of Trenton and surrounding areas. I have partnered with them, along with some of our other colleagues here on the dais, and you guys are on the ground every day. Most people don't know that you're in our senior buildings consistently. It's not a once-in-a-lifetime thing, and since we are approaching Veterans Day, it was only right that we came here to congratulate you all, honor you, and salute you, and say thank you for your service to our country, thank you for your service to our community. I appreciate you. I don't know if anyone else wants to say a few words before we move on to the next one, but thank you all for being present.
Madam President?
Madam Vice President.
Thank you. I just want to take a moment to say thank you for the tremendous work that you do. I echo the sentiments of my colleague, Councilwoman Gonzalez. Thank you for being boots on the ground, for caring, for educating, right, and for taking the time that you do to perform the service that you give to the community and at large with excellence. Thank you.
Council President?
Councilwoman Edwards. I'd like to thank you, VFW, Mr. Austin, for everything you do, everything you did when you first took the oath to protect our country, foreign and domestic, and thank you for what you're doing today. I know I've referred some veterans who needed assistance to you, and you've done your best to help them, and anything more that our City Council can do, I know you know we're there, but thank you for always honoring your oath from the first day to this day and beyond. So God bless.
I just want to say thank you to everyone, thank you to Mr. Austin and everyone that came out to honor you for your giving. I worked with the Veterans Department here at our city, especially under Mayor Jass's administration, and Mr. Marcus was here, and we did our veteran, salute to our veterans for about six years. I have not had the honor of meeting all of you gentlemen, but I, with the exception of reading, I'm out of vest of you, but I thank you and I honor you, I appreciate you for your sacrifices, I echo the sentiments of my colleague here, and I am so glad that she saw fit to honor you on this day. You deserve enough of this, your flowers and more.
Madam President?
Madam Edwards.
Thank you. I just want to say, as a military bride to a 38-year-retired veteran, my father, I understand the sacrifices that your families have made in praying for you to come home, praying for your safety day in and day out, so I just want to say thank you for your service, and thank you for your sacrifices that you need to this country.
Thank you. After we finish, we're gonna take pictures when we finish all of these, so please, when you see us get up and move, we're gonna ask you to motion that way, you'll be the first ones to go with us. Thank you so much. Actually, yes, let's go ahead, let's, since this is your moment, let's allow you to take, if you'd like to come to the podium, and if you'd like to say something for a minute, you're welcome. One minute. The clock is two.
Madam President, Councilmembers, uh, yes, thank you for your honor.
You need to see a red light come on, a Mr. Cruz is about to help you. Thank you.
Madam President, Councilmembers and Presidents, we thank you for recognizing veterans for what we do and what we continue to do. We know Veterans Day is coming up, and that's the day that we celebrate all those who have served and even gave ultimate sacrifice. We're here for Trenton residents and families of Trenton. All our services are free, whether it's for education, housing, disability, compensation, anything that you need like that, just reach out to us and we're here for you. But thank you.
Moving on to our next honoring, the same people we want to honor, someone who gives continuously and particularly to us, City Council, gives up his time, gives up his energy, gives up his resources and his talents. So on this evening, City Council, City of Trenton, this is a resolution honoring Mr. Raymond Ingram. Where's Mr. Ray Ingram? We don't call him Raymond, we call him Ray. Mr. Ray Ingram is a graduate with honors in Computer Science from Hartford Polytechnic in the United Kingdom. And where's Mr. Ray joined the London Office in Computer Software called Mathematica and moved to the company's head office in the United States in Princeton in 1978. And where's Mr. Ray moved the office from Princeton, New Jersey to Trenton in 1987, running technical support and training as the company expanded around the world. And where's Ray also worked for other startup software companies, and ran a technology-based workforce, developed projects between Mercer County Community College and Middlesex Community College. And where's Ray worked for his own small Trenton-based software company, Thathrow, for the last year. And where's Ray has been involved as a volunteer in the City of Trenton, supporting several different groups, such as the Capitol Heights Civic Association, Trenton County Civic Associations, and more. Whereas the Trenton City Council thanks Mr. Ray Ingram for his tireless and relentless service to our community, and where's Ray's passion for this city and his invaluable and selfless use of his technology to better support the Trenton community. And whereas the City of Trenton is in particular, and in particular, the Trenton City Council is proud of Ray's contributions to countless hours of recording at each council meeting. And now, be therefore resolved that the Trenton City Council, State of New Jersey, does hereby acknowledge and honor the faithful recording services of Mr. Ray Ingram, the Trenton and its City Council. Ray, we thank you. And on the back end of that, I've got a horse that acknowledges his lovely wife, my name is Miss Kelly Ingram, because his sacrifice is always your sacrifice, so it is in tandem that the two of you work together, so I thank you as well, Kelly, for your sacrifice in allowing your hubby to come out with us, day in and out. If anyone else has anything they want to say to Ray, now would be the time.
Madam President? Thank you. Ray, thank you for everything that you do. You just step right in without question, right? You provide a service to everyone so that people are in the know about what's going on, and so, you know, we thank you for your dedication to this process, we thank you for your service to the city, and we appreciate you. God bless. Thank you.
Ray, I just want to thank you for everything that you do, echo what my colleagues have said. You make our city a better city, you make our city a more engaged city, and everything that you do makes the city a better place for my kids and everyone's kids, because we're able to make our government work better, we're able to have more transparency by union and just videotaping these meetings and providing them to the public. But also, those little things, when I needed to set up the North Ward CPAC, you were the man everyone said to go to, and you got us off the ground, and you got us off to a great start, so I can't thank you enough, and I hope the journey with us in the future is always a good and fruitful one. Thank you so much.
Council President? Councilwoman Gonzalez.
I just want to also say thank you, I echo the same sentiments as my colleague. Mr. Ray, not only are you here with us and you give up your time for the live streaming, however, you also do so much for our kids, for the community, and we just want to say thank you so much for being a beacon in our city.
Councilman Harrison.
Ray, where do I start? You, your wife have been a beacon in this community for a long time. It's either City Council, community meetings, you're always there to help for this people in this great city, so thank you, Ray. Thank you, and Kelly, and thanks, Mr. McCray, I see him right there, sitting there in front row.
Ray, I mean, anything that I say at this time would be redundant. Everybody pretty much covered all the bases as to the person you are, your name is seriously synonymous with customer service, with public service, public work. You're so customer-oriented, whereas I don't think I've heard or known out of you any time I've come to you or asked you for anything that is related to the community, for the community. You keep everybody up to date as to what events and what resources that we have for the city, and you are just such a wealth of knowledge and a wealth of just giving. And you and Kelly, you guys are seriously just pillars of the community, you guys give so much and don't ask for anything in return, so just thank you. This is very much deserved. Thank you.
Ray, if you'd like to have any words, now would be the time. You get to be on camera instead of behind the camera.
Eight forty-five seconds. Council President, Council Vice President, Councilmembers, thank you for this honor. It's an honor indeed. And thank you to all those volunteers in the city that have supported TCCA, the CPACs, I Am Trenton Community Foundation, the Neighborhood Improvement Association, TDI Connect, and so many other great community efforts that happen daily in our city. All of you in this room are part of building an even better Trenton. I would also like to thank those companies, organizations, and individuals that have donated PCs to TDI Connect and supported our efforts in breaking the digital divide and creating or trying to create digital equity. Thank you.
And finally, but most certainly not least, the City of Trenton, City Council, resolution honoring Miss Jessie Payne Tossi. Where's Miss Jessie Payne Tossi, is a native of Florida, who relocated to Trenton, New Jersey in the late 1960s. Whereas Miss Tossi received her Bachelor of Science degree from Tuskegee University, her Master's of Science degree from Florida State University, and continued to advance studies at Columbia University in New York. And whereas Miss Tossi is a proud mother of two sons, John and David, along with seven grandchildren. And where she has a long and distinguished career in the field of education, being an educator for over 31 years. Whereas, Miss Tossi is a passionate educator, who was involved in every student she encountered, well-being, low-being, as an academic achievement, their well-being and academic achievement. And whereas Miss Tossi devoted her time to many youth and is a firm believer that education has most influential impact on one's life. And whereas Miss Tossi is dedicated and a valued member of Grace Cathedral Fellowship, Ministry, and community advocate for the City of Trenton. And whereas Miss Tossi has effortlessly contributed an enormous amount of time and talent for many, these attributes are driven by Miss Tossi's passion and desire to help and inspire others. And whereas we would be remiss not to acknowledge Miss Tossi as she embarks on relocating from the City of Trenton to travel to places unknown but surely always calling Trenton her home. And now, therefore be resolved that the Trenton City Council proudly honors such a remarkable woman with outstanding values and virtues. Miss Tossi, you are a virtuous woman. The City of Trenton is going to surely miss you, and we thank you for all that you have given to our city. If any Council would like to say anything to Miss Tossi, now would be the time.
Go ahead.
Council VP.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President. Miss Tossi, thank you so much for everything that you have done over the years to help so many people. I did not have the opportunity to experience you in school, I've heard many of the stories from those that have, and I thank God that you were in position to help to get the students and the people together in that time. From the time that I've known you until now, you've been a constant help, you have supported, you have prayed for, you have guided, you have mentored me, and I appreciate you for your love of this city and of the people. God bless you, I wish you nothing but the very best as you journey forward to your next life's adventure. God bless you.
So, I did get to experience Miss Tossi as a student in the hallways of Trenton Central High School, and there is not one student that ever attended Trenton High and did not know Miss Tossi. So I want to salute you, Miss Tossi, I love you, I tell you every time I see you, I won't tell you some of the personal stories, you know, when she would yell at me when I was in school, but I want to say I appreciate everything that you've done for all of us, and we wish you all the best in the future.
Miss Tossi, I don't know if you remember me from Trenton High, but I will tell you this, as sure as I walked in late today, I walked in late to Trenton Central High School often, and I would drag my dad with me to sign me in so I would not get detention from you. And you used to sit at the front door I walked in. But I echo Councilwoman Gonzalez's sentiment, said that there is not a student that went to Trenton Central High School during your tenure that do not know who you are, what your name is, and what you did, and how you cared about us students at that school. So I even sit yelling at some of the security guards who were doing no good. So I really just want to stand up here and say this honor is so sincere and so well-deserved, and thank you for all of your years of service.
Anyone else?
I'd just like to say, ma'am, thank you for everything you've done, educating and helping to guide all the students that came to Trenton High, and if you do have time before you leave to tell us some stories about Councilwoman Gonzalez and Councilwoman Figueroa and Karen Bird, I'd love to take you to coffee. Take care, and we'll rock you out.
Okay, is that it? And so, on one final note, Miss Tossi, I have to say this, you were instrumental in my getting to the seat where I am today. You have supported me throughout my campaign when I was running, and your notes that you gave me, the names you gave me, the list you gave me, the people you had called me, the people you had to come out and support me, I can't thank you enough. You were a quiet, quiet storm for me, boisterous but a quiet storm, and I sincerely, I want to thank you, I would not, I am confident that I would not be in this seat if it were not for the genuine efforts that you constantly put forward in making sure that I got to this seat. So I personally just want to say thank you. I'm going to miss knowing that you're not here, but I'm glad that you're going to be with family and that you'll be, well, this is family too, but you're going to be with your sons, and we're going to miss you here in the City of Trenton, and you are and will forever be a treasure here. So thank you. The red light is on at the podium.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm very thankful to be here. And to all those who are former students of Trenton High, I have brought my suspension papers. Because I have brought my suspension papers, I love you, it was nice working there, nice knowing you, I met some wonderful, wonderful people in Trenton when I moved here. It's been a wonderful time, I don't regret it. I love you, God bless all of you, and thank you so very much.
We're going to meet everyone in the back, and because Miss Tossi is who we are, we're going to ask Miss Tossi if you would meet us in the back first, and we're going in the reverse order. So Miss Tossi, Ray, and then our esteemed gentleman, in that order, we'll meet you in that corner now. Thank you.
On your call, Madam President.
Let's continue.
Madam President, next on our agenda, we have two cannabis presentations. Each of these have been approved by the local CAC, and each presentation will be no longer than 10 minutes of each. And I can call them up at your will.
Let's proceed, please.
Our first presentation will come from NJ Weed Man's Dispensary LLC.
Hi, my name is Sam Reddick, I'm the attorney, I'm just going to give the Florida Air Fortune, who is NJ Weed Man, but I'm here if there's any follow-ups, questions, legal or technical of nature, and...
Hello, City Council.
Good evening.
This is kind of is a special day to me, it's been a long time coming. Just a quick presentation, this month, 26 years ago, was my first felony arrest for selling marijuana. And now, I feel like, wow, 26 years later, here I am asking City Council to approve my resolution to, amongst other things, sell marijuana illegally. I want to say thank you also to the Chair of the CAC, the Cannabis Advisory Committee, Ken Wolfski, who I just read his recommendation, he recommended approval of my business. The world has changed in the last 26 years. I couldn't imagine coming before a government body 26 years ago and asking somebody to approve me to sell marijuana. The world's changed, it's changed in favor of this. You know, I think of this sometimes, it's like, you know, we got a war on drugs, but marijuana, cannabis has been removed from, is being, right now, is being removed from that war. I felt like a victim of that war, and now, if you would support my, this resolutions, I may become a, I don't know what to say, a beneficiary of the change of times. So, I'll just leave it at that. Like I said, the CRC Board has already recommended, given me a temporary license, a conditional license. The CAC Board, CAC Commission has recommended yes, and now I ask the City Council here to also approve this. Any questions? I don't know where to go, I'm kind of, very rarely am I stuck for words, but this is one of the moments, to me, it's been 26 years, and here I am, so it's one of those, I'm getting tongue-tied here, so I'm gonna stop.
Kobe, thank you for your presentation, thank you for coming before us. It is, this actually is a moment in time, like you said, for this to be the month, 26 years later from when you were actually incarcerated for something that is now, will probably turn your life around completely in a, in a manner that benefits not just you, but our community, what so many of our black men have been incarcerated for, we now get to be able to be the recipients of the reward of it. So, I'm glad that you're doing this and you're taking all the proper steps, because you're going to be showing the pathway for others who are going to come in hand and do it the right way. So thank you for coming, thank you for doing, for doing exactly what you're doing and showing folks that it can be done, and it is going to be done here in our capital city, and we are going to just help change just the way folks, when they think about it, how they look at it. We know that it does more than what folks would have us to think originally. So thank you, sir.
Madam President?
Madam Vice President?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, I'd just like to say, that considering where things were back 26 years ago to where they are now, right, and just your whole experience in evolving into who you are today, I'm glad to see you here in a positive way, looking to do it the right way myself, but I also want to speak to the fact that you are more than just a business owner here in the City of Trenton, that you have given back, that you sow into the students at the high school, that you encourage entrepreneurship in whatever field they would decide to go into, but you have taken the proceeds from your monies that you have made and have awarded two Trenton High School students with scholarships of $5,000 apiece. Yes. You offer internships to students that would want to take it. Your heart is for the children, your heart is for the city. Your heart is for the children, your heart is for the city, and it is for the people. So I just want to say, thank you for coming forward to do it the right way and for everything that you do above and beyond the brick and mortar across the street. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilwoman Edwards? Yes, ma'am.
I just want to say, I commend all the efforts that you've had put in, you've put into this industry from the moment that I met you back in 2014. And I know your fight preceded that long, you know, long before. But I remember working for, at the time, Assemblywoman Bonnie Watson Coleman down East Day Street or West Day Street and being outside nearly every single Thursday advocating for the decriminalization and legalization of cannabis. You understood the plight of the community that our previous laws had on our community, the effects, how it ripped families apart, how it tore our communities apart. And you were relentless in that fight. I consider you to be someone that was on the front line and putting your life on the line for the cause, for the greater cause. So I appreciate your selflessness and all the efforts that you put in for this battle. And I just wanted to pull out a little bit of more information from you because, you know, I've known you to be, you know, not talkative, but very expressive and communicative. So you do your business, you provide a platform for local talent all over New Jersey. You provide a platform for entrepreneurs, you provide a platform for economic development. What are your plans for your business? Because, you know, a lot of cannabis businesses are going to be reinvestments to their community. So can you elaborate for us a little bit on that?
Well, like you said, I have been providing a platform. And to those that don't know, I kind of do a little entertainment thing over there, it's just not selling weed. I have, I have like a stage over there, there's a lot of young people around here who don't really have places to go and perform. So I've been, I've been providing that and I continue, I want to continue to do that, to expand. The two buildings across the street, in the last two years, I've actually bought them. And I actually want to expand the whole entertainment aspect of it, get a bigger, better venue for these young people looking for their first time on a stage. I have taken a couple people, young people, under my wing and showed them a few things. And me myself, it's not always been about selling weed. Both my parents were entrepreneurs, both my parents own businesses and I've always looked forward to owning my own business. The fact that I'm about ready to be a legal marijuana businessman, or could be if you vote yes, is different. But I've always felt like I was a businessman. Had a little detour in the state prison, you know, but whatever, here we are now. Everything is, this world changed, like I said. You know, I plan, you know, I just plan on, you know, it's a new world, you know, it's a new world and I plan on expanding on that, who knows where, you know, through the grace of God, where I'm going to end up at. You know, like I said, 26 years ago, things didn't look good. And here we are, things are looking very good now.
Thank you, sir.
Council President?
Councilwoman Edwards?
Thank you. Mr. Fortune, otherwise known as Mimi. I just want to congratulate you getting to this moment. I'm sure there were times in your life that looked like something like this may never come, so I can only imagine what your feelings and your emotions are right now. And I know even in our conversation we had last night, there's some things regarding even getting to this point, like this City Council tried to do everything it could to get to this point for everybody with cannabis and the ordinance and certainly didn't impede your application. But I'm wondering, just for education of everybody, give us a feel about how you've done things. What does it feel like becoming a legitimate, I don't want to say legitimate, that's kind of a causal word, but more to say a legal businessman in the same industry that you've been working so many years to try to bring to legitimacy and bring to legal fragility in this state and in other parts of the country?
Like I said, there's very few times I'm at a loss for words, but emotionally I am at a loss for words. I really do feel like this is a moment in today, I'm going to write this down as one of those great days in my life. Just if you say yes. Like I said, it's been, you know, a fight here, a fight there, and I do understand, I poked the bear sometimes and the bear punched me back. But here we are. Again, loss for words.
It's okay, thank you.
I'm just there, I don't know where to go.
Thank you for having your business in the North Ward and thank you for everything you do in the city and particularly, as my colleague stated earlier, for the youth, to give them a better way in this world.
Okay, thank you.
Take care.
Anyone else?
All right, thank you.
One more, um, sorry?
Really quickly. I just really want to congratulate your journey. I don't know you personally, which is crazy because if you talk about marijuana in the city of Trenton, it's you, it's New Jersey Weed Man. And I do know a lot of people who do know you well. And I've never come across somebody that has ever spoken ill of you either. So I just want to thank you for your diligence and your tenacity and I'm sure the representation that you may or may not understand that you had on other black and brown youth in the city of Trenton to follow your dreams, to never give up, and to just keep fighting for what you know in your heart is right and to just always do the right things. I just want to say thank you for your contributions to the city.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Say yes.
Mr. Garcia?
Certainly, Madam President. Our next presentation is from Astronaut Planet World LLC.
Hello, I'm Michelle Paffino and I'll let my partners introduce them before we get started.
I'm Arnold Taylor.
Richard San Rosas.
I want to thank everybody for your time tonight. This is Tucker, he served this country as well. I wanted to kind of briefly tell you who I am and then what we can do for the city of Trenton. I am a serial entrepreneur, I own several scrapyards, I have currently a manufacturing distro in Long Beach, California. I'm the representative for the state of North Carolina for the Opportunity Zones. I also work with the Department of Energy and the Department of Labor for prison reform. I have a 501(c)(3) second chance program that we work with to give people a skill set, a trade, and an employment opportunity to be community partners, come back with their families, and have an actual opportunity to be marketable in your community. What our goal is with, it's actually Astronaut Planet World. And the reason it was put that name was the research. We actually hired a research company to come in and educate consumers for alternative health and wellness in the cannabis space. We wanted to be able to give the city of Trenton, and why I chose Trenton for me personally was, to showcase that people all need a second chance, an opportunity, and an education. And I liked the location for the Opportunity Zone to showcase that people can change and make a difference. We've had one of the best success rates with our prison reform, it's been 99% reentry. And that, for people to have their kids come back in, their families back together, makes a big difference in your community, especially with young men and women. The head of our prison reform served five years in incarceration for marijuana trafficking. So he works with the youth and he helps in education. For me, this is a big passion and hopefully Trenton will understand what we can do. We're going to give back 3% in our net profits back into the community. I currently work with the men's shelter, the women's shelter, the Center for Community Transitions, and my son sits for the head of the Domestic Violence Advocacy Group. And how we can take and help people get back up on their feet with not just unemployment, but changes in community. So my joy and my hope with the city of Trenton is what we can do, not just for you guys who make these decisions, but all these men and women who all need a chance. Everybody needs an opportunity. I think I'm going to let Arnold share his commitment, Richard can share his, but I think what I can showcase for the city and for the community and young men and women, an opportunity to change. To be a serial entrepreneur, you don't get to these levels unless you have the passion and the commitment. I was the National Small Business Person for the SBA for the state of North Carolina, as well as Wells Fargo National Small Business Person for my commitment to my community, helping others and making a difference.
Hello, City Council, thanks for having us. Mickey's a great friend of mine, I know Mickey forever. What we have in common is we've always came into a community and uplifted the community and tried to bring advancement to the community. Me myself, I come from the music industry, worked in the music industry for years, you know, companies for marketing and labels, you know, dealing with artists, dealing with entertainers. But always, always had real estate, always had different businesses. Born in Miami, raised in Charlotte. My dad's from Irvington, New Jersey. I lived in Paramus and I worked in New York for years. Jersey was always important to me because it was always from Charlotte to Jersey, stopping, you know, from Miami to Jersey, stopping in Charlotte. But, but the reason we chose Trenton is because to me, it was easy to choose a city north of Jersey going to New York. But I think, you know, we like the challenge, we like the cities in our opportunity zones that we can make a difference. Not just from an entertainment standpoint, because that's just a draw that we can bring to the community, you know, fundraising. But the reason I got into the whole cannabis space is because of the opportunity that it provided. It provided opportunity, you know, from a medicinal standpoint to save lives, change lives, not just from a recreational standpoint. You know, and I was amazed by all the kids that were, you know, influenced by, you know, what it was. So I was intrigued by that. So what I've learned to combine, you know, the cannabis space with the entertainment space is for us to grow the real estate space in the community and bring more business to the community. Because as we know, these kids like to be attached to certain things that they're excited about. And once you're excited about, then you can teach them, you can elevate them, and you can bring more and more things to the community. So we've been good about putting a spotlight on that in a tasteful way, not in a money way, not in a financial way. Because that's secondary, you got to want to be in this, in this business, because it wasn't, it's not an easy thing to do. And, you know, we appreciate you guys considering what we do at Astronaut Planet. We appreciate, you know, the opportunity to come speak, respect the city, want to be a part of the city, to grow for the city. And this is just one of the things that we want to do in the city of Trenton. So thanks for having us.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Richard. I've actually known Mickey for a very, very long time. We actually met a while ago when we worked together on one of the prison reform programs. I'm a lifetime New Jersey resident. In fact, the only time I didn't live in New Jersey was when I was in the military, a member of 82nd Airborne Division. So when I was at Operation Iraqi Freedom and During Freedom were the only times I was outside of New Jersey. So other than that, I'm probably going to live and die here in good old Jersey. And I liked it. I immigrated here from Haiti with my parents when I was very young, about seven years old. So I got to see an idea of American dream. I was blessed to have two full-time working parents, so it gave me the opportunity to participate in a lot of community programs. And that's the same kind of structure that I want to bring back to the community, see where I could help with the prison reform, see where I could help with the community outreach programs. Before this, I worked for Charity Buzz, I don't know if you ever heard of it, it's an online auction that raises money for charities. So we raised over $100 million for charity, so we do have connections, we want to bring some of those opportunities here to Trenton also.
Thank you. If anyone has questions, I do have just one question. I did hear you say that you were giving back 3%, which we do appreciate and that affected our men's shelter and our women's shelter. With regard to employment for our residents, what does that look like?
So for us, it's about being able to work with, I've already started reaching out across the aisles to people who are either in the shelters looking for employment opportunities. We do have our provisional license in manufacturing and distribution as well. So it's a multitude of employment ideas that we can integrate into. Because I'm in the scrap business, because I'm in the Institute of Scrap Recycling Industries, which is a national platform, my reach is national. It's not just what we can do to put Trenton on the footprint for a map. It's about giving people, if they're living in the city of Trenton and they get a job, and let's say they say, Mickey, I'd like to have a vertical move. I have the ability, Arnold has the ability, so does Richard, to reach out to other companies locally to give people jobs. I've got a customer, this is how small the world is, my customer at my second scrapyard up in Hickory is doing the prison in Trenton. They're a construction company. I said, would you be able to come and do some of the work and work with some of the residents for some construction? He said, anything you need me to do within the prison systems in this area is all open and cart launch. The same goes for Amazon, who's another one of my customers. Pretty much the reach for all of us can help, I think, bring a footprint. What we want to do is make Astronaut Planet World a destination location. I want to make it Coca-Cola of cannabis in Trenton. And I think we can do that. I think I've got enough, Arnold has enough, Richard has enough, and Trenton has enough to show what it is, not only to make a difference, but I was a single mom of triplets, I know what it is to fight and win.
Excellent. Just one more time, so I'm a numbers person. So I just, your percentage, when you're talking about Astronaut Planet World.
Will donate back 3% of their net profits.
Yes, as far as employment, are we talking 50% of our residents, 60, 70, 80?
All of them.
So I'm saying everybody that is going to be working there will be a Trentonian.
I'm not bringing anybody in except for the local community.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Madam President?
Councilwoman Edwards?
I see that you are acquiring 65 prospect for this, for this facility. Can you describe the facility, the square footage? Because this is a property that has been sitting there vacant, dormant, dilapidated. Can you give us like a, like kind of a nutshell rundown of how you want to restore it or what the condition is, what you're planning?
Absolutely, we walked it actually today. So the opportunity, because it's in an opportunity zone, that was the reason I chose that location. I like taking projects, Arnold likes, we both love real estate. I think that the property has so much potential, it just needs somebody to give it an uplift and I think we can do that. So the front part would be in where the building starts, it used to be a medical building to the left and to the right, will be the dispensary pieces. Storage will be to the upfront and then hopefully we can move along and possibly integrate other opportunities inside that location. But I like that it's like that. I know a lot of people probably got scared, but I've seen worse, I promise. Thank you. Anyone else?
I just want to make a comment on what you said, like that's the whole thing about us coming in and trying to like, you know, revitalize the community. It was easy to go get a strip mall and try to just put something in a strip mall, but I think it's not just about cannabis for us, it's about to grow for the city. So just the fact that we take in a building like that, that's been a hot sore in the community and making it beautiful, I think that's going to strike, it's going to change that whole block, of what that block can be. that whole block, of what that block can be as well, you know what I mean? So that was the whole purpose of even picking that building, so we can, we can revitalize the city as well.
Thank you.
Vice President.
Council members.
So this is Chris, further regarding that location, what made you pick that location out towards the westward rather than any other part of the city?
Well, like I said, I'm the director for the state of North Carolina. It's in an opportunity zone, and when I looked at locations, a lot of people offered, but I wanted to make a difference. I'm not looking to just sell weed. I'm looking to change lives, communities, families. And that's why, even in my scrapyards, there are an opportunity zones, even in our cannabis business, it's in Long Beach, it's a little bit of a rough area for people, in California. Yes, ma'am. So I really wanted to be able to say, look what we did to change a place that nobody else maybe would look at, not to mention, look what we can do for the people in the City of Trenton, the state, as well as the City Council. Because you're making a decision to change community lives, and that's what it's about for us.
And my last question would be, one of the things that we've done particularly with council and working with the administration on it, even the ordinance, is try to make sure we're treating this industry as a very serious industry. Because even part of it is, there's gonna be a 2% tax, and 10% of that 2% tax is actually going to go towards identifying and addressing healthcare disparities within our city. So it's, it's very important to us that this industry, your business, the other applicants succeed, but also run top-notch businesses. So I was curious, from your standpoint, how did you see the process? Was it a fair process to you? But also, how do you see this business in Trenton versus other places? I know we're still getting started on it.
Sure. I think for me, obviously, I'm not looking for the wild, wild west. I liked the steps and the measures that went through and the protocol. And since I have all of the license currently, medical and recreational, in California, we actually took the time to hire research companies through Atrium Health, to be able to educate everyone that comes to work. People that come to my facility is not, here's some weed, smoke it, no. Here's what we can do if you don't want to take naproxen. Here's what you can do if you don't want to take aspirin. Here's what you can do if you need, if you're diabetic, you need sugar-free. Everything that we have put together in our platform for our SOPs, for our education, is about health and wellness. And I've spent 35 years in the health and wellness space. I own my own spa. I still work doing that. I go in at 7:00 and I finish at noon. And I have my minors in kinesiology. So I think we've taken all of the measures to understand and educate everybody in your community, when we open, if we get awarded this, how we can help people, whether it's your mother with cancer, your father with cancer, whether it's, you know, someone that's diabetic that needs something for pain management. We've kind of taken every alternative in all of our product lines to meet the needs for health and wellness, and not necessarily just falling over, smoking a joint. Thank you.
Thank you. Yep, that's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for your time.
Absolutely, you're welcome.
Are you close, Madam President?
Let's proceed.
President, we've reached public comment. If it's your wish, we can begin with public comment. If I could have the public comment clip?
Please.
Certainly.
Thank you, sir.
Madam President, appears we have 13.
Okay, let's proceed.
Certainly. First person to have for public comments, Pastor David Cox. And just to inform the public, public comment will be five minutes. You will have five minutes in order, in order to speak on whatever you wish, but at the same time, it is not a Q and A session. The council is not obliged to respond to you.
Please state your name.
And please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, Madam President and to the council, David Cox. Please say Pastor David Cox, or David Cox first. Some of these folks who sit down, and these three that are coming behind me, are definitely want to benefit from the heart spatter. I believe he has a resolution in front of you for 23, 4, 9, 6, in reference to the heart spatter. I'm born and raised in Trenton for the last 48 years. My church was originally in Brunswick, we moved to Trenton, New Jersey, back where I'm from, and we've been all over different places inside of the city. And recently, we moved from Old Rose Street to 611 Parkway Avenue. Anybody that's familiar with Parkway Avenue, one side of the street is Union, Ewing, the other side of the street is Trenton. I mean, literally, our service doesn't stop. These three gentlemen. Yeah, they are. It's three of them. It's three of the ones that we actually mentor currently. And actually, we just got sponsorship to be able to give them laptops for the last couple of days, to be able to help them continue the education. In the middle of the pandemic, we were able to start a summer camp. But the funniest thing happened, we started, we were charging, the first one was free. The next year, I said, something gotta give, so we charged $25 registration and $25 a week. And all that was, so I could take all the money at the end, divide it up to pay our volunteers. Only problem, when we got to the end of the summer, I had to chase half the parents down for the $25. And we didn't have enough to be able to continue to do it. I still didn't give up, came back, tried it again, because it was about benefiting the kids. Even as we have transitioned into the board of Ewing, Trenton, however you want to do it, our main focus is still Trenton. That's all I know. You can take me and move me to Florida, Chicago, wherever you want me to go. All I know is the City of Trenton and the ability to help the people that I grew up in. I grew up on, I was born on Chandler Street, moved to East Day Street, went to Parkside Avenue, went to Southeastfield Avenue, went to Oak Lane. That's the progression of the city that I'm from. Even my church is mainly in the location around. We still have a pantry on Old Rose that is run out of many homes, where we service at least three of the Trenton Housing Authority buildings, and we do a couple of the senior citizens places at all. We adopt a couple of families every year for Christmas. We take care of families in and out, whether you're on low income or not, we try to help who needs help. The benefit of the one being in Ewing Township is the setup for people who are working, who can't get out to the day one, and they come out at night, and the line is around the block, and most of them are Trenton residents. We have their addresses to prove it. And even in my resolution, the program is set up for the Trenton schools, that the children might be able to come. And the strangest thing on Parkside, which I didn't have much of when I grew up, on Parkway, is when they come to where we are there now, there's green grass. And even when they come there, for whatever they do, their kids play in the grass. And it has always been my thing, even when we were charging $25 for the summer camp, if you ask them, run into any of them kids, they had pizza, went on trips, went swimming at Hessel Pool. We took them everywhere, went to the movies. They did all kinds of stuff as though they was in a real YMCA, paying Top Dollar Camp, because I believe they needed that experience. So whatever you read the resolution, give us a real shot. I'm still gonna go around and figure a way to make something happen, or give me a chance to work with our babies. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Dante Thompson.
Next.
Eric Tunsford. Now, Octavia Sutton.
Three of these council members. My name is Octavia Sutton. I reside 865 Park Avenue, Trenton, in Villa Park section here in the City of Trenton. I'll be 74 the 12th of next month, 12th of this month, rather, which I believe qualifies me as a senior citizen. I love animals as much as the next one, and among them, dogs especially. I had a German Shepherd, Humza. I acquired him when I was nine weeks old. I had to get him up for adoption two years ago, when he was three years old, he was over 100 pounds. This broke my heart, but his activity level was too much for me at this stage of my life. Humza needed to be with a family, with kids that could rip and run him the way I couldn't. I couldn't bear to deprive him of what he needed. But an overpopulation of domestic animals can be an ecological concern, as well as a financial problem for us here in this city. Capturing, impounding, and eventual, how do you say, euthanasia, costs taxpayers and private agencies millions of dollars each year. Unfortunately, many animals, unfortunately, many animal caregivers don't have their pets spayed or neutered to prevent the births and unwanted, to prevent the births of unwanted and accidental mothers that contribute to this dynamic. It's my understanding that from September 2022 until now, $700,000 has gone to yard and kennels to house an average of 75 dogs. Over $300,000 for veterinarian services and clinics, $290,000 to install electricity and plumbing and trailers to make more room for the dogs. And except for the $400,000, $50,000 that came from the DCA grant, divested from our budget and residents' taxes. But only $60,000 for senior citizens' activities. I don't give a... The numbers that I've been given is the city pays $435 per day to house dogs, 72 dogs in yard and kennel for a month. That's $939,600, minus the $450,000 allocated from DCA, that's $489,600. Whereas the budget for senior city, senior activities is mere, is a mere $60,000. That doesn't sound right to me, that looks worse on paper. I hope you ask you to please honestly think about this. If and when you are blessed to become a senior citizen, think about if you would want your life and well-being on the same scale as a dog. Although we all love our pets like family, would you trade your grandmother's life and well-being for your dog's life and well-being? How we can put an animal's life on the same scale as a senior citizen is beyond me. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Carl Farvalasi? Got it.
Good evening, council. My name is Carl Farvalasi, 901 Chelsey Avenue. Couple of recent cars here, parking ticket, for parking in a school zone. I've been parking next to my house for 37 and a half years, over 37 and a half years. The school we're talking about is Washington School, in Mr. Harris's district. I live in Mrs. Figueroa Kettner's district. There's no signage, app off. If I'm in a school zone, and I'm not in a school zone, I don't know, I'm sitting up to city council, who makes up, okay, this is a school zone? Or is it up to transportation? That I don't know. Like I said, 37 and a half years, now I'm in a school zone all of a sudden. I'm three blocks away from the entrance to Washington School. And that's kind of far, especially parking in the Chambersburg area. It's, it's tough. The center of the park is within 50 feet of a stop sign. And the norm is 25 feet from a stop sign. So I guess that would be a transportation, uh, school zone, the school board? I don't know. That's why I'm coming to you, to find out, or at least put signage up. I have one other thing too, and Mrs. Figueroa Kettner is familiar with this, because I've talked to her about it. I have a tree next to my house that the city planted, low ground 20 years ago, it's a sycamore tree. I don't know if you're familiar with sycamore trees. They grow 90 feet high, 90 feet wide, and they've been there for 600 years. They're planted at eight feet from my house. I have one in my backyard that's 15 feet circumference. So this tree's going to get dead big. It's already caused $18,000 with the damage to my house. I filed a tort report, never heard anything from it. Ms. Kettner has notified Renee Morgan, Ricky Woods, Anthony Santor, and Tricia Walker. And actually, I, in 2018, had a letter of removal from, it was Parks and Recreation, Tricia Walker. And they refused to cut it down because it was a baby. Now, it's rubbing up against my house, and it's tearing up the sidewalk. I talked to Andrew Bob about it, he goes, well, just replace the sidewalk. I said, you're gonna do that every year? Your roots are coming up out of the ground. It's an eyesore, and it's a danger. And hopefully you guys can get these people to possibly do their jobs, and you're in a straight board, it rips, rips my house apart again. And that's all I have to say. Thanks for hearing me. Have a good evening.
Thank you, sir. Yes, 901 Chelsey, it's 901 Chelsey.
Chelsey.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yvette Cooper?
Good evening, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. Good evening. My name is Yvette Grafic Cooper, and my address is 114 Redden Avenue. I have been living in the City of Trenton for 34 years, and I've been working for the City of Trenton for 22 years. Two and a half of those 23 years, two and a half of those 23 years, I was laid off from the city, but I showed up to work. Two and a half years, 8:30 to 4:30, without a paycheck, for two and a half years, volunteering my time to whatever department the city wants help in. Now, I'm the health officer for the City of Trenton, and the reason why I asked for this time is because the health department is a staff of nine, we have rich armed nurses, and I have been thrown under the bus, over the bus, beside the bus, run over, back up, just because the health department has been reduced to just animal control. And I want to just stand here because we're not just animal control. And I came before you guys the last time I was here, and I wanted to share some of the other things that the health department is doing. I did not get a chance to say anything that we were doing. It went right back to, we want to talk about animal control. I love animals. I have a chihuahua that I took from the shelter, and I have a German Shepherd at home. I, you know, the, the animal shelter is not an issue that the health officer or the health department created, and we're doing our very best to work with what we have. But I just wanted to point out some of the other things that we do, and it's, and it's not because we don't like animals, we're doing the best that we can. So I would just like to point out that, in addition to animal control, we have a lead program. And Trenton is one of the three highest municipalities in the state of New Jersey when it comes to lead poisoning in our children. And if the children are gonna be our future, there's gonna be a bunch of children with developmental disease because of lead. And I wanted to put that out there because, you know, if you, if we're just reduced to what goes on at the shelter, and nobody's talking about the children that are lead poisoned, they can't learn in school, it, it retards their growth. Right now, we have a total of over 286 families within the City of Trenton, whose children have high lead levels that we are constantly working on. We, the grant... The grant for the lead program started at $120,000. The first time I got involved with that grant, the state honors us with $846,000. What they approved for July 1st of this year is $1,105,000-plus dollars to help us to combat that lead problem we have because most of our homes were built before 1978. So I would just like that to be put out into the open that what the health department does is not just animal control. COVID is still here, but in the height of COVID, the health department was one of the departments that was not able to work from home because we can't get vaccines to home, we can't test you from home. And the health department, we, for two and a half, almost three years, did not take one day off work. We worked seven days a week, 6:00 AM to 12:00 midnight. And for all of that to be reduced... For all of that to be reduced, for me to be called a murderer because of the dogs, and that's what I was called. Someone also approached me and asked me the question of, if that was my child, would I put my child down? You know, the things that have been said, I feel as a city employee, and we're doing everything that we can. You know, it's not fair that you're just looking at one aspect and then, you know, we get blamed for doing that. My son has been in the United States Army for nine years, straight out of high school. He's out there right now fighting for our safety and well-being. But I am being called a murderer because of dogs that we're doing our best to take care of. That is not fair. And I just wanted to put that out there. It's not because we don't like the dogs. But we're not breaking any rules. We're trying our best to do the best for the dogs. But we're not breaking any rules with putting a dog down. That's not the first option. But if we have to, like the senior citizen just said, we're spending almost a million dollars to house dogs when we don't have a program for seniors. And nobody's paying attention to... No one pays attention to the lead-poisoned children that we have. No one is paying attention to the fact that, right now, in the city of Trenton, there's 52 cases of hepatitis A, 40 cases of hepatitis C, and 30 cases of hepatitis B. These are communicable diseases that get reduced to animal control, the dogs. No one is accredited in the health department for going into the homes. When Monkey Park was here, we had to go into the homes. During COVID, we had to go into the morgue. I've never seen so many dead bodies at one place. We did it all. We went into all the buildings where nobody else wanted to go in because they think somebody died of COVID in their room. It was the health department that suited up and going to every place that no one else wanted to go. There's more, right? But we can talk about it later. But that, I am not a murderer. And for all the folks that are asking what happened with my underwear issue, I'm going to tell you what happened with my underwear issue. I am... No, it's serious. I was already punished by the city.
That, you do not have to explain yourself, and this is not the form for... Not. And you do not have to defend yourself, but you know who you are.
Thank you for having me, ma'am.
So Yvette, I hope you stick around for council's comments. I'm not going to have anybody comment right now, but Mr. Garcia, if you would continue on.
Certainly. Memphis Madden?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Memphis Madden. I reside at 25 Montgomery Place. I am an employee of the health department. And I'm here in support of my health officer. I started in this position in 2019. I was straight out of graduate school. And very grateful to Yvette for giving me the opportunity to begin my work in serving my home alongside with her. COVID hit in 2020, and that was my real-world learning experience. When we started the process of contact tracing, of testing, as she said, going into the funeral homes, we took care of all of our long-term care facilities. I mean, it was unreal. Being in it was unreal, especially as a new professional and a young adult. When we transitioned into giving vaccines, I actually was pregnant. Pregnant with twins. My last day of work was on a Thursday. I delivered on the following Monday. So that just shows the type of commitment that not only I have, but my supervisor has, as well as the staff. And I just wanted to highlight some of our accomplishments during that time. We worked alongside the Hamilton Health Department, who had the first vaccine clinic in Mercer County in December of 2020. We followed up as the second municipality in Mercer County to have our own in January of 2021. We were the only municipality in Mercer County to work alongside FEMA, as well as the United States Army, to distribute vaccinations for a total of two months. We worked diligently with a lot of our local houses of worship to provide vaccines to schedule people. We had Councilwoman Feliciano there making calls with us on weekends till 9:00 PM on Sundays. And we were the first municipality in the state of New Jersey to successfully plan and execute a homebound vaccination program. And we had a lot of people follow and model off of what we started. We have received recognition from the New Jersey Department of Health for our work. We've been recognized by Governor Murphy, who came to one of our vaccination clinics when we were working alongside FEMA and the Army. And the CDC has recognized Yvette and our department, not only for our mass vaccination clinics, but for taking the step and reaching directly out to our residents with the homebound program. And that's just only a little bit of the work that we do. Now, I am not only emergency preparedness coordinator, but also the health educator for the department. And so as we transition into post-COVID and trying to do more and reach out to our residents directly, I look forward to hearing from each one of you, not only your ideas and your suggestions, but also your concerns. Because our goal collectively as a department, your role as our Board of Health, is to help us create a healthier environment within our city to influence healthier behaviors among our residents to have a healthier Trenton. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're going to have to help me out here. Rajata Hodges Mills? Thank you.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
Thanks for having me. I just wanted to say a couple of things quickly. Not going to take up too much of your time.
Name, address, please.
Yes, Rajata Hodges Mills. I'm a Bronx and Towsbury resident, as am now. But I have many investments in the city of Trenton. I am a native Trentonian, born in Mercer Hospital, raised in Fraser Homes. Got my first heartbreak in Trenton Central High School. Learned my husband from Trenton Central High School. So I'm actually here. Just to tell you guys how much I'm invested in the city. We have a private practice called Diesel Therapeutics, which I'm a licensed counselor and provides services to city residents who struggle with mental health and addictions. But I'm actually here because I actually had the opportunity, and if we look at document number 23-485, I had the opportunity to be given a chance at bidding on a couple lots in the city. So that moment was life-changing for me. I actually sat in a room with $4 million within, I want to say about five other individuals in the room. I was only the person of color. I was also the only woman in that room. Okay? That means a lot to me, even though I feel out of my element. I'm just here on behalf of that and just to hope you guys really consider making that dream come true with me providing a chance at generational wealth for my family. We currently own about five rental properties right now in the city of Trenton. We've been a licensed landlord since 2013, buying my first property when I was seven months pregnant. So please consider that as you kind of move forward in making our chance of generational wealth come true for my family.
Thank you, Ms. Hodges Mills.
Amin Sababu?
Amini Sababu.
Sababu?
Good evening, Council. And I think everybody up there probably knows me one way or another. I can probably echo what Octavia was saying.
Name and address, please.
Sorry. My name is...
For the record.
Okay. My name is Amini Sababu. I live at 311 Bellevue Avenue in the city of Trenton. I was born and raised in the city of Trenton at McKinley Hospital. But anyway, I just can't understand something. And somebody has to help me understand. It seems like... It seems, I don't even want to say it. But it seems like somebody has, or something has got you in a place where animals mean more than me. I don't understand how elders have to crawl into a van to go somewhere. Yes. I've asked Octavia to come up here with me. Anyway. There's so much that I see. I'll be older. Oh, really? I'm pushing 70, really. So I am like, there's so much that I don't understand. Why? What is $700,000 over here and $60,000 here? Help me to understand that. I don't understand it. It seems like if you don't put this $700,000 here, we're going to get you. You're going to be blah, blah, blah. So do it. Now, I like animals. My son loves rescue dogs. Why? I don't know. All they do is bark and run around. But they listen to him. They don't listen to me, so... Anyway. Can somebody, out of all of these people, help me to understand that? Help me to understand the $700,000? And the elders having to crawl into the van to go somewhere? Your turn.
We don't do rebuttal, ma'am.
I can't hear.
We don't do comment back.
Oh, you don't do comment back?
Yes, ma'am. We have a... Right. We'll have a city comment after all the public speaks.
Oh, oh.
We get to respond to you then.
I know. This is my first city council since all of you guys have been council.
We're trying to do it in decent seating order, ma'am. Let you speak.
Thank you so much. I have to get ready to start. I'm already... Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Bridget Miller Woodley? Yes, no?
I think she's spoken, yes. She can't, she's waving her...
I don't know.
I'm on. Yeah, she's waving her time.
Okay. Dolores Smith?
She's waving her time as well? Thank you.
We go on Maddie Garcia.
Waving her time?
Veronica Ross? Yes? Okay. As in yes comment or as waving her time?
Waving her time.
Madam President, if that's the case, I have no other people for public comment. If it's your wish, we can move to civic comment.
Yes, please.
Certainly. Who would you like to speak?
Let's talk. Councilwoman Edwards, please.
Councilwoman Edwards.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for being here. I just wanted to say it was a pleasure to see the room more full today. So I appreciate the civic engagement as we move along throughout the year as a new council. Hopefully, you guys have a pleasant experience. Just want to say congratulations to all of the honorees here this evening. It was very well deserved. And that's all the comments that I have for today. Have a good evening.
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here tonight. I echo the sentiments of my colleague. Congratulations to all the honorees that were here tonight. Truly, they are phenomenal people, deserving of recognition. On next Thursday, November 90, from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM, myself, along with Assemblyman Anthony Varelli, Commissioner Nina Milker, and our Director Maria Richardson, are hosting our third community conversation about trauma and mental health. We have a great panel of people that will be with us to speak among us about solutions that we can come to together within the city of Trenton to help address the issue. I have flyers in the bag. They were there for people to take with them. If you were lucky, so we would encourage everyone to come. It's going to be right here in the City Hall atrium, the 9th of November, from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Thank you.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kettinberg?
Good evening, everybody. I want to congratulate again everybody who was awarded tonight. It was very much deserved, as I had said previously. And I also want to thank anybody who's come forward, you know, that has resolutions on the table for us and is really just trying to bring the city forward and invest in the city. That's much appreciated, and we're extremely grateful because we need so much more of that. I don't have any announcements. I do just want to speak to the animal issues because I have been, you know, a voice for advocacy for animals. And I want to speak for myself when I say that it's not man versus animal. It was just a problem that was on the table that we're trying to deal with. And I know Maria Richardson, our director, has been working diligently and very hard just to solve the problem because we do have an abundance of animals that are overbred and mistreated and let go in our city, and that's problematic as well. But I don't think that one budget should supersede another. And I agree with that. And I thank you all who came up and spoke on that behalf because sometimes, you know, our hearts get in the way of decision-making. And we just want to spread the love and do the best possible for every situation, every issue that we have in our city, which everybody knows who lives in this city and is of this city, we have plenty. You know, so I just wanted to say that. And then hopefully, we will come to some just cause with that issue. But, you know, it has been ongoing, and I understand your guys' concerns with it. So thank you all very much tonight for coming out and hope we can get this meeting going. Thank you.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes, thank you, everyone, for being present. Congratulations to all of the honorees. And I also just want to say congratulations to the city of Trenton, Director Richardson, and everyone else who hosted a Trump retreat during Halloween. It was a beautiful event throughout the city. All of the events were beautiful throughout the city. And plenty of kids had a great time. Even their daughters had a great time. I had a great time with the haunted house, the haunted field. So I just wanted to say, great job with that. To those who came up and spoke, thank you so much. We heard you, we hear you, especially our seniors and our elders. I even, one, have been advocating for funds so that we can help extirpating some of our senior buildings. I'm in these buildings every other month, partnering with the BMW. So I see some of the issues that are going on. So I agree with us having more funds allocated in that area. So thank you for being vocal about that. I also want to just say, anyone who is investing in our city, my schoolmate, I see out in the audience. I want to say, you know, we're definitely in support of everyone investing in our city as much as possible, especially those who are from the city of Trenton. And for the gentleman who spoke about the parking issue, that is something that we will look into. I don't know if he's still present. But to have no signs visible for someone who has been parking in the same area, I think that is an issue and should be addressed as soon as possible. As far as announcements, I just want to say the Trenton Southwood Neighborhood Association will be hosting our monthly meeting, November 14 at 6:00 PM. will be hosting our monthly meeting, November 14 at 6:00 p.m. Also, we have Trenton Central High School cheerleading competition. They will be performing this Sunday at 3:00 p.m. And also, I just want people to know there's a lot of individuals who say our kids don't have anything to do. Where's our weed and seed program? We have several free after-school locations for students to attend, and they are, one is on with Clinton Avenue, Prospect Avenue, and San Boos on Chestnut. And I just want to make sure that people understand that these kids deserve free after-school programs from 2:00 or 3:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. for our young people. And I've been going there just, so thank you for allowing me to use the space to work with some of our students. And I just want people to know that there are programs out here for our kids. Please, please take advantage of them. Please register if you know of a young person who may need something to do. It's really a nice place to be at. They have plenty of activities for the kids and also tutoring. So, I just wanted to make sure that that was known, and thank you all for being here this evening.
Councilwoman Harrison.
I too would like to thank everybody that was honored tonight. It's always good to see smiling faces coming up to that podium and doing wonderful things in our great city. It's, I'd like to thank Maria Richardson for all that she does, the trunk or treat. I'd like to thank Wally, who had the, got the Bobcat, and we did our legal dumping cleanup for the weekend. It's always good to know that we're out there working hard, and this city was able to come out with the dumpsters and help out and do their part, too. So, it's always good to see people coming in this room, want to see the brighter future of the city. So, let's just keep working together, and let's just keep moving the city forward. Thank you, everybody, and have a blessed evening.
Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you. I just want to say thanks to everyone coming tonight, everyone who spoke. You're very passionate about what you said, and you said some things we needed to hear, particularly thank you to Health Officer for talking as you did, because we do need to talk more than just about animals. But, you know, the animals are important, but humans and Trentonians, that we can never, ever, ever forget our fellow man and woman in this city. I also want to thank Councilwoman Gonzalez for bringing that resolution together for us to honor the D. W. Rested Council because particularly this time of year with Veterans' Day, it is a time where we think about our veterans and what they sacrificed for our country. So, we must never forget that, but also in the other 51 weeks of the year, we must make sure we take care of our veterans just as much as when we honor them for Veterans' Week. I'd also like to add a few things. So, I just want to congratulate and thank Director Richardson, Department of Natural Resources, all your staff, also the Trenton Police Department, because I was able to attend, along with many of my colleagues, the trunk or treat at the police department last week, which was absolutely amazing, to see how many kids came to celebrate Halloween. And then also, a few nights ago at the West Ward Community Center, just incredible job decorating, making the area behind the center and inside really have an amazing Halloween feel, and how many kids and their families came to have a safe space to get candy, have fun, be scared a little bit, some more than a little bit. But it just really blew my socks off, and I just want to say thank you and congratulations. I know you all put a lot of work into that. As far as the issue of animals versus seniors, my colleague, this Councilwoman Figueroa Katzenberg, you know, hit it on the head. It is now something we have to be able to weigh, our seniors, as well as the situation with animals, but our seniors must come first, and $60,000 is nowhere near enough. We are going to have to figure out ways to supplement and get more money to our seniors, and I look forward to City Council being a part of that in the future. So, please know that you are always on our mind, seniors are always on our mind. Our council has spoken out about more services for seniors, more housing for seniors. So, we do keep seniors first to our hearts, but we hopefully can walk and chew gum at the same time and be able to take care of the situation with animal control. And animal control is not our entire health department, as we said, but we also need to make sure we're doing our due diligence as far as taking care of animals in this city, because that is very, very important. And animal cruelty leads to human cruelty. Also, just wanted to add a couple announcements. So, the North Ward Business Police Advisory Council for November, that means it's going to be Wednesday, November 15, the Galley Baptist Church, from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. So, if you are in the North Ward, you have a business or organization, or just are interested, please come. We have a great sense of community going already. And just further down the street and over a little bit, we recently had our meeting for Antico Square Skateboard Park and the surrounding park planning last week, which was outstanding. There's really amazing plans and things are going to happen in that part of Trenton. So, look forward to hopefully getting a presentation at City Council. We're also going to have a community meeting to make sure we have community input, but just know that in the planning department, your city administration really is thinking ahead and trying to be inclusionary of everybody, and I was really happy to see that in the meeting. Finally, I want to add just the last announcement. Positive Black Images Connect is going to be presenting their 15th Annual Black Year Community. It's coming up on Saturday, November 18, from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. There's going to be vendors, crafters, a lot of networking, live DJ, and it's going to be located at Christine De Sykes Academy at 1550 Stylistian Avenue. So, please check this out, and for more information, you can email PBIC365@gmail.com. The phone number is 609-510-3196. That's 609-510-3196. And thank you very much for coming tonight and have a really great weekend.
Councilwoman President Frisby.
Thank you, sir. So, I have a couple, and I'm going to try and move this very quickly. I wanted to address Mr. John Rahana Hodges Mills. One, I commend you. I'm excited that you're going to, you're buying these lots of them, that you are being one of the positive, you and your husband, one of the positive landlords here in our community. We need more folks like you, so we commend you for the work that you're doing. I also wanted to, Councilwoman Gonzalez didn't say we didn't want to address Carl's issue, which I believe he left with that parking ticket, with him to get a ticket in here, not be any posted signs. That is problematic. Then there was Pastor David Cox, who came with Hearts Matter and his three beautiful young men that they have since left, but I'm excited to see people moving about in our city and making sure that our seniors and our children are being taken care of. I want to speak to Ms. Octavia and to all of our seniors who came out at the meeting. I want to start off by saying there is no comparison to our seniors when it comes to animals. Period of the sentence. You are not on the same level, and what we are, what we are weighing those two, they don't even get on the scale. So, our seniors and animals don't even get into the same arena. There is no way that we can do for animals that we don't do for seniors. I have been saying this, and it was part of my campaign, and I'll continue to say it. Our seniors should be, have better living conditions. Our seniors should have housing, busing, and all of those things free. We should have everything that accommodates them in their golden years than they have in their latter years. Things should be easier for them and not more difficult. If we are allocating and we are fighting so hard to take care of animals, we're going to be fighting that hard. I'd love to see people coming in here and advocating so hard as they do for animals, as they do for our seniors. It is so wonderful to see people coming in here, week after week after week, talking about the animals. That's great. I have a rock waller. Love my rock waller. If it comes to my rock waller, my husband, my children, there is absolutely, positively no, there's no option for me. There is nothing for me to consider. My family, the seniors, you do not get on the same scale. Please know that. Please understand, and I say that unapologetically. Don't care what anybody says. They can label me however. Ms. Ube. I beg to say, we have Director Cooper Memphis. We have talked, and I'm glad that you came up, and I hope you come back each and every one of our means, at least once a week, quarterly, however it is that you want to come up. And I want folks to understand what our health department does. We are not there just for animals. Period of the sentence. I'm so glad you brought things to light, to let everybody else know what you're doing. Bringing in our children is a consideration. Yes, there is, we have everyone here, or if you don't know it, you should know. Trenton has a lead problem, a really big lead problem, and it is delaying the development of our children. We have, that is something that we ought to be talking about constantly, but we're not. But our health department is doing it. Memphis, I appreciate you, I applaud you for coming in, one, in the middle of COVID, if you came here in 2019, and you guys did, you had to be here when everybody else got to hunger down, stay at home, and be comfortable without having to worry about risking their life, literally, with this invisible, these invisible disease that was out here. You and your colleagues and countless others had to be out here. So, I commend you, I thank you for helping our city the way that you have and the way that you continue to do. Even, I wanted you to stay because I also want you, you don't have to justify yourself to anybody. They are not deserving of it. Anybody that comes and wants to shame you or anybody else, that's their problem. It is not your problem. I'm just saying that. We're not going to allow a cancel nation to come in here and badmouth our people. We're not going to allow them to come in here and badger our workers for doing their job because when they go to their place of business, they don't want anybody coming in there and harassing them because they're doing their job. So, if you're doing your job and you're doing it the way it's supposed to be done, there is nothing anybody should be able to say. So, we're not going to allow cancel nation or anybody else to come in here to bully you, to bully any of your workers. We're not going to allow them to have that space, not at this stage. So, if they have a problem with that, tell them to go kick rocks. That's just not too soon. I'm just saying. My last thing I did want to say is our Halloween, Director Richardson, who stepped out, did a phenomenal job. It was at our West Ward Center. We had hundreds of people out there. I want to leave it on a high note, and I'm so glad I was at our West Ward Recreation Center. I personally went through that in haunted house. Yeah, I imagine they did not appreciate it as much as they, people walking towards me, I did not like, and I told them, "Don't touch me." But to the Recreation Department, you did a phenomenal job. City of Trenton, you did a phenomenal job. Our police department was out there, our fire department was out there, our health department was out there, our recreation department was out there. Trenton came out, and they had a safe space, a warm space, a fun space to be at, and that's the kind of culture and the type of dynamic we're trying to have here in our community. We want to have that sense of community where people know they can come. There was not one incident, not one, and there were hundreds, hundreds of people that were there. So, I commend you, Director Richardson, who's walking back in. I commend you and your staff for putting together such an incredible Halloween. Your husband was absolutely great. That's cool. He was doing his thing. It was just a really good time, and I wanted to thank you. We don't say thank you enough to each other, but with this body of council, I have to say we're doing our best to let our community know. We thank you, and we're saying it up here, which is why we recognize, we're recognizing people so much. We want to let our folks know that we appreciate you. There's great things going on here in our community, and if we don't celebrate you, why should we expect anybody else to celebrate you? So, I want to say to our directors that are out here, thank you. To our law office department up here, thank you. To our clerk, thank you. To each and every one of you, thank you. And I also wanted to mention to Ken, thank you to you and your candidate advisory board for doing the great work, for making sure that we're doing things properly, that you're forcing all the Ts and dotting all the Os, so when it kicks to us, we can just make the basic decisions, and so you go ahead and do the late work. So, thank you for that. We, Mancy over there, appreciate you for sticking out. I commend you because you're setting an example. You're doing it, and I sincerely appreciate you for doing it the right way. Because now, you, whether you want to be or not, you are that role model for our children that are just left out of here. So, thank you for that, and to the other ones that came. I thank everybody for coming out. I want to read by the city of Trenton's mission statement, which is recognizing that the people of Trenton have made us guardians of the public trust. We are committed to government with integrity and fiscal responsibility to seek excellence in the city's operations and to serve all of the city's people with respect and compassion. Mr. Garcia, I give you the floor.
Certainly. Madam President, if you're ready, we can move on to whole business.
Yes, sir.
If you don't get it. Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve the minutes of July 6th and August 3rd?
No motion. So move.
Second. Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Katzenberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Frisby.
Yes.
Motion carried. And Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve communications and petitions?
No motion. So move.
Start with that. Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Katzenberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Frisby.
Yes.
Motion carried. And Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve reading reports?
No motion to approve the reports, please. So move.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Katzenberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Frisby.
Yes.
Motion carried. On to ordinances for second reading of public hearing. Ordinance 23-60. Ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property identified on the city tax map as 316 North Clinton Avenue, Block 1701, Lot 32, pursuant to NJSA 4812-13B5 to Carmen Montalvo for the sum of $3,000. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve?
No motion to approve. So move.
Councilwoman Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Katzenberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Frisby.
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance 23-61. An ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property identified on the city tax map as 81 Summer Street, Block 4,3, Lot 41, pursuant to NJSA 4812-13B5 to Ed E. Kelly for the sum of $5,700. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve?
No motion to approve, please. So move. Second. Council President.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes, ma'am. I have a question I just wanted to ask about, not necessarily this particular property, but I'd like to find out how it was valued at $5,700. So, I'd like to ask Mr. Cruz, possibly?
Good evening. Chief, Chief of Staff, acting head of PGD.
Thank you, sir.
So, what we do with these is we start with the tax assessor, and then generally the starting point is about 50% of that tax assessment. That's, I think, that's our starting point.
And then is there a certain percentage of why this would be 5,700 versus a house maybe a few blocks away that might go higher or lower? Is it just generally?
The start is we need the tax assessed value of the specific property, so that would be a tax assessor.
So, it's a hard number, that?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
You are voting, Councilwoman?
No.
No, no, Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Any additional discussion, Madam President?
No, sir.
Moving on to a vote, then. Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Katzenberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
And Council President Frisbee.
Yes.
Motion carried. On to resolutions. Resolution twenty-three dash four seven three. Resolution awarding a contract through competitive contracting process to CBIS Insurance Services Inc. Board... Excuse me. CBA CBIS Board in Parliament to provide broker insurance services for the City of Trenton Department of Administration for a period of one year and amount not to exceed a flat annual fee amount of seventy-five thousand dollars per year, with an option to extend the contract for an additional two-year extensions.
No motion to approve.
So moved.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettenberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
And Council President Frisbee.
Yes.
Motion carried. Resolution twenty-three dash four seven four. Resolution authorizing the appropriation of seven hundred and eighty-four thousand five hundred and fifty-three dollars and twelve cents from funds allocated to the City of Trenton under the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 for gear and personal protective and safety equipment for Trenton Fire Department, vehicular workstation laptops and fire apparatus equipment for the City of Trenton Fire Department.
No motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettenberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Frisbee.
Yes.
Motion carried. Resolution twenty-three dash four seven five. Resolution authorizing amendment to resolution twenty-three dash four four six. Award to Safety National for General Automobile Law Enforcement and Public Officials miscellaneous liability and excess liability coverage and amount not to exceed one million forty-four thousand one hundred and twenty dollars from October tenth, 2023 to October tenth, 2024.
No motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettenberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Frisbee.
Yes.
Motion carried. Resolution twenty-three dash four seven six. Resolution awarding contract to SHI International Court for the renewal of Open Gov Cloud Budget Management System license for the City of Trenton through New Jersey State Contract Number M four zero zero two two one dash T L E dash zero one three six zero for a period of one year from December fifth, 2023 to December fourth, 2024, and amount not to exceed eight six thousand nine hundred and fourteen thousand eighty cents.
No motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettenberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Frisbee.
Yes.
Motion carried. Resolution twenty-three dash four seven seven. Resolution closing municipal buildings on certain holidays observed by the City of Trenton in 2024.
No motion to approve.
So moved. Second. Madam President?
Madam Edwards?
I don't see Indigenous People Day on the calendar. I got grace.
Would you like to address it?
You can.
All right. Madam President, good evening.
Good evening.
May I?
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Thank you. Madam President, Adam Cruz, Business Administrator. As you are all aware, or I guess some of us are aware, we used to celebrate Columbus Day as a holiday. And what we did is that we traded Columbus Day for Juneteenth. And that is why you don't see Columbus Day or Indigenous Day. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Any other discussion, Madam President? Sorry.
Let's continue.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettenberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Frisbee.
Yes.
Motion carried. Resolution twenty-three dash four nine four. Resolution, City Council of City of Trenton in support of classified cannabis retail application of NJ Weed Man's Dispensary LLC.
No motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
I'm sorry, was it seconded by?
Gonzalez.
Thank you. Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettenberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Frisbee.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Congratulations, sir.
Resolution twenty-three dash four nine five. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Trenton in support of classified cannabis retail application of Astronaut Planet World LLC.
No motion.
So moved. Second.
Got it.
Joe Jenna? That Joe, didn't it?
Yes.
Joe.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Got it. Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettenberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Frisbee.
Yes.
Motion carried. Resolution twenty-three dash four nine six.
Congratulations. Congratulations. We thank you. Congratulations. Wonderful. Thank you, sir.
Resolution twenty-three dash four nine six. Resolution authorizing the appropriation of one hundred thousand dollars from funds allocated to the City of Trenton under the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 to Hearts Matter.
No motion, please.
So moved. Second.
Council President?
Councilman Harrison.
Mr. Beach, could you speak on this? Good evening. Jim Beach, Chief of Staff.
Yes, sir.
I understand there might be some questions because Pastor Cox's organization is technically located in Ewing. As he explained earlier, it's right across Parkside or Parkway, I think.
Parkway.
Separate apart from that, though, the plan in the city to do the non-for-profit plan allows that even if it's not technically located within the borders of Trenton, if it is benefiting the citizens and children of Trenton, as this clearly is, that it's permissible use within the city. And it's, by way of comparison, the one that we had done similarly was Meals with Wheels, which also is located in Ewing or Hamilton. But because it was benefiting the citizens of Trenton, we and you permitted it to be an approved place for use. And so I would certainly support that we would do that again tonight.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Great power. Councilwoman. Mr. Garcia?
Certainly. Any further discussion, Madam President?
Continue. No discussion.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettenberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Frisbee.
Yes.
Motion carried. Resolution twenty-three dash four nine seven. Resolution authorizing the appropriation of one hundred thousand dollars from funds allocated to the City of Trenton under the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 to salvation and social justice restorative street team.
No motion.
So moved. Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettenberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
And Council President Frisbee.
Yes.
Motion carried. Resolution twenty-three dash five oh five. Resolution authorizing the appropriation of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars from funds allocated to the City of Trenton under the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 for the construction of sidewalks, curbs, and ADA compliant ramps as directed at various locations within the City of Trenton by the Department of Recreation, Natural Resources, and Culture.
No motion.
So moved. Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettenberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Frisbee.
Yes.
Motion carried. Resolution twenty-three dash four seventy-eight. Resolution for the authorizing of the City of Trenton Department of Administration Division of Personnel staff to process an involuntary disability retirement application.
No motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettenberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Frisbee.
Yes.
Motion carried. Resolution twenty-three dash four seventy-nine. Resolution providing for the insertion of a special item of revenue in the budget of the municipality pursuant to NJ SA forty-eight four dash eighty-seven, chapter one fifty-nine, by the law nineteen forty-eight. Public Works Department vehicles, six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
No motion.
So moved. Second.
I'm sorry, does it move by?
Joe.
Yeah.
Thank you. Seconded by Feliciano.
Feliciano, yes.
Thank you. Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettenberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Frisbee.
Yes.
Motion carried. Resolution twenty-three dash four eighty. Resolution providing for the insertion of a special item of revenue in the budget of the municipality pursuant to NJ SA forty-eight home four dash eighty-seven, chapter one fifty-nine, by the law nineteen forty-eight. Recreation Department removed two hundred dead and compromised ash trees, one million one hundred thousand dollars.
No motion.
So moved. Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettenberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Frisbee.
Yes.
Motion carried. Resolution twenty-three dash four eighty-one. Resolution providing for the insertion of a special item of revenue in the budget of the municipality pursuant to NJ SA forty-eight forty-eight four dash eighty-seven, chapter one fifty-nine, by the law nineteen forty-eight. Fire building repairs and support vehicles, one million seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
No motion.
So moved. Second. Council President? Councilwoman Williams. Thank you. Just like to ask the fire director just to confirm, I believe you did before, whether this would include the concrete floor for the North Clinton Avenue Firehouse that has the wooden floor that needs to be replaced.
Madam President?
Who's service?
Thank you. Good evening, Council.
Evening.
Madam, Councilwoman's question. This money is actually the money that was set aside from the Division of Local Government Services, DCA.